Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council. What are these again called? Town hall meetings, a town hall meeting with our city council. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Here.
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 We'll go ahead and get started on agenda item number two is wildfire safety. City officials will update the public on wildfire safety, defensible space, programs, and summer conditions. And so we've got with us a couple of our experts. I'm going to turn the time, who gets it?
Kim's first.
Kim has got the time first and then we'll go to Assistant Chief Christensen here. And as soon as Kim's done, and then after they're done with the presentations, then we will go ahead and open it up for some comments from the, questions from the audience. You needed to sign up. We had two sign up sheets. We've got three people that have signed up. So Kim, you've got some time here.
Sounds good. So thank you. I'm Kim Staus from the Pocatello Fire Department. I'm the Community Risk Reduction Specialist. We were asked to come and talk to you guys tonight about wildfires, kind of how they, what we're seeing across the nation, what we're seeing here in Idaho, and then the program that we use to educate residents and prepare should we ever be faced with a wildfire. I did bring some of these packets that are over there. Has a lot of the same information that you're going to see in the PowerPoint. So feel free to take one of those when you get done. So our goal really is to strengthen your understanding, kind of talked about it. We want everybody to be prepared as we see, if you watch the news, you see wildfires all over. As of this morning, there were 69 large wildfires burning across the nation with 15 of those having evacuation orders in place. So we know wildfires are very pertinent to our area and it's really important that we are prepared for them. So when you look at mega, what we call mega fires are the 1% fires. Those are the big fires that usually have catastrophic effects on populations, on structures. And I'm sure most of you can remember these big fires recently. These are just a handful of them. Paradise Fire, which was in 2018 in California, lost a lot of structures. Then you had the Marshall Fire in Colorado. That one was unique in that it had a very similar dynamic to what you would see here in Pocatello. It burned into town and lost a lot of structures, six injuries and two deaths. And it was interesting because it was in December. Oftentimes people think wildfires only happen in June, July, and August. And what we're starting to see is that is shifting and moving more into September, October, November, and December. Even in, as you'll see, the Maui Fire was in October, or the Lahaina Fire, as a lot of people hear it referred to. That was one that generally a lot of people didn't think of Hawaii as having major wildfires. But again, with the changing of the weather and the people moving into a lot of the areas that weren't normally inhabited, we're starting to see more of those. And the most recent one was the Smokehouse Creek Fire in Texas, which was a pretty large fire. Over a million acres were burned, and that was in February of this year. So big wildfires happening across the nation, as I stated. 69 of them are currently going on in the United States that we have large crews on. Nearly 21,000 firefighters have been deployed to those fires and more are coming each day, just like we had a crew go out. Nick will talk about that, get deployed today to go out and assist on those. So when we bring it more local, this is a map that just shows the wildfires that we've had in the Pocatello area since 2012 through 2022. There on the green is the power line fire. While it didn't lose a lot of structures, it, as you see, size wise was quite substantial. And then it breaks it down into the individual. I'm sure a lot of you can remember the Charlotte Fire that happened in 2012. You'll see there that area is pretty small, but that one had a more substantial impact on our community and where homes were lost. But this just gives you a kind of a picture of that we do have them here. As we know and by the studies, it shows that the potential for wildfires is significant and there's, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So we really need to be prepared, both for our individuals and as a community, to be able to respond to that. Hold on, we went back too far. There we go. So this was a Charlotte Fire, as I mentioned, in 2012. It started on a red flag warning day, and we'll talk a little bit about what a red flag warning day is. During the course of that fire, and it was in a matter of a short period of time, we lost 66 homes and 29 outbuildings. And it was very fortunate that the wind shifted when it did. Otherwise, there's strong potential that it could have moved through Johnny Creek. And so we were very fortunate in that they were able to get the upper hand on it and stop it before it did move more into town. But that's probably the biggest known one for our area, even though it's not the largest landmass fire we've had. Here's the wildfire counts, and this just goes to show that the number of wildfires is increasing every year. And the studies and the research is showing that that's going to continue to be the trend is to move upward and move into areas that aren't normally seen to have wildfires. But this is here in Idaho, and so you can see there is a few dips, but for the most part, it is trending upward. So something we need to be mindful of. This recently came out from the National Interagency Fire Center, and this looks at the significant potential for a wildfire in the coming months. And so you'll see there on the one, it's July, and then August and September. The areas where red are, are the areas that have the highest significance for a potential for a significant wildfire. And you see southeast Idaho there is covered in red. So obviously, it's a concern. It's updated every month. When I printed it off this morning, it changed and it's added more red from what it was last month. And I think that has to do a lot with the high temperatures we've been experiencing. We did have a lot of moisture early on in the season, so it allowed a lot of those fuels to grow. And then as we've had the significant high temperatures, it's drying out a lot of those fuels, making it a perfect environment for a wildfire. This was recently done, and this looks at the likelihood of a significant wildfire in Bannock County. And the red obviously is bad. We have a 99% higher chance than other areas of the nation of having a wildfire. And it's kind of interesting, I'm sure a lot of you've heard about Idaho Power doing the education on the public safety power shut offs. And a big portion of that came about because of the studies that are coming out showing the significance of the potential for a wildfire. And obviously, a lot of the large wildfires that we've seen have been caused from power lines. And so they're trying to do their part in not only hardening their technology, but also being prepared to shut down power lines in the event that there's a high likelihood of it. When we look at the risk to homes, so we know obviously we have a high chance of a wildfire, this drills down and looks and measures the potential for the impact to homes. Fortunately, in the city, it's not, right in town is not so bad, but on the outskirts, we do see a significant area of concern with 98% of us having a greater chance than other communities in the nation. And so that again, shows that the need for not only to educate residents, but also for residents to take proactive steps in preparing their homes, preparing their property to stand the greatest chance should a wildfire start of not affecting their home. Kind of touched on this, what a red flag warning, you may hear this come out. These are issued by the National Weather Service. And what they do is they look at the temperature, the relative humidity in the fuels, and the wind speed. And if all three of those, so if you have high temperatures, low relative humidity, and high winds, usually more than 15 miles per hour, and greater, less than 12 to 15% humidity, they'll issue a red flag warning. And what that is just stating is it's the greatest potential for a wildfire to start, and if one should start, for it to propagate pretty fast. And so not only do we want you to heed warnings and to take proactive steps in practicing good fire safety, but definitely on red flag warnings, we don't want to see people out doing, if you live in what we call a wildland urban interface area, we don't want to see you out doing maybe chainsaw or mowing where you could hit a rock and throw a spark, making sure you're not ever dragging your chain. But these are the ones that we're really mindful of and the chiefs look at, and oftentimes we'll staff extra brush trucks. If it's something that's a potential, then we'll have them drive in our wildland urban interface areas to ensure that we have crews ready to deploy. If you want to add anything, Nick, jump in. So in the city of Pocatello, we use what's called Ready, Set, Go, and this is kind of the national standard. And what we're really encouraging is, when you're looking at it, the first step is to get ready. So we really want homeowners to take the proactive steps, wanting you to sign up for emergency notification. There's a QR code there where you can sign up. Bannock County, we use the Bannock County Alert Sense. And so what we do, if there's any large scale emergencies, we would activate the iPOS system, and I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a few minutes. But we'd also potentially use the subscription for people maybe not immediately in the area, and that way they could be notified. Also creating a defensible space, and I'll go over that a little bit more. And then a wildfire action plan. Oftentimes, when we look at after action reviews of large scale fires, one of the things that always comes up is people have a lack of communications. You know, if you have a large incident and the cell towers are overwhelmed, they could cause the cell towers to go down and then people can't communicate with their families. One thing that they have found is oftentimes on large scale emergencies, if people can text, but they still not be able to call on a cellphone, but they can text. So just keeping that in mind, having a communication plan with your family, identifying an area where you can meet up, if you're, especially if you're in an area that's a wildland urban interface area, that basically the outskirts of town, where you would meet if you were ordered to evacuate, or if you have kids at home during the day and you're at work, how you would notify them to make sure that they got out. Also, understanding your evacuation route. Oftentimes, when we come and go, we tend to travel one route. That's the route we know. But how many times do you try to practice another route in the event that that route was blocked with fire? And so always really encouraging, more the merrier, but at least having tried to have two ways out of every area from your house. You know, if you were in one, can't go this way, you could go another way. Again, being ready and prepared, hopefully you won't have to use that, but we'd rather have it in place and not need it than not have it and need it. And then having go kits, at least identifying objects in your house that you would need to get out quickly. We would try to notify you as soon as possible so that you could start preparing those things. But identifying medications, any important documentations, if you've got pets, maybe getting their medical records just so you have that on hand, because if you were to go to a shelter, they're going to need to verify that your pet has the appropriate vaccinations before they can allow them in. And then just some stuff that you would think that maybe you have some valuables that you want to take, just identify them early on so you're not faced with us coming to you saying you need to evacuate, and then you're going, well, what do I do now? So just trying to prepare, think of the things, definitely signing up for those emergency alerts. There is a postcard in the bags that have the QR code as well. So if you haven't signed up for that, really encourage you to do that. And then when we talk about defensible space, if you live in an area, again, it's a wildland urban interface area, so areas that, where you butt up into like the wilderness, the trees, Johnny Creek, East Center, West Center, Satterfield, all those areas are potential areas for a wildfire. And so what we would really like to see people do is to start creating defensible space. And it's things that you can do that, for little to no cost, there's things you can do for no cost. Yeah, there are things that could cost money, but there are also things you can do that's just a matter of cleaning up around your property. And we break it up into three zones. The first one is your immediate zone, and this is going to be the area closest to your house. So zero is your house and five feet out. And this is where we want to have all wildfires out before it gets to that point. So we really want to ensure hard surf, like you're not using maybe bark up next to your house. We'd rather see rock up next to it. If you have dead leaves or pine needles in your gutters, getting those cleaned out. Ideally, you wouldn't want to store wood pile up next to your house because that's going to bring the fire to it. So just things that are going to keep it cleaned up and tidied up. If you have trees, make sure you're limbing them up and spacing them out so that that way it's going to hopefully put out any fire before it gets to your home. The next one is the intermediate. This is five feet to 30 feet. So this is where we want to take a fire that's up in the crowns of the tree, and we want to bring it down to the ground level. And then at the ground level, it's going to go up to five feet and then hopefully go out. So here, our goal is to maintain, you know, making sure you get any dead brush that's down on the ground, getting it cleaned up, spacing your trees out enough so that it doesn't go tree to tree to tree, and then limbing them up. It's not a matter of going through and clear cutting your property. Oftentimes, people think when we say make your home defensible, they say, what, you want me to clear cut it? And that's not it at all. We just need to have it spaced out and limbed up, and that way it's going to offer a fire break from going to tree to tree to tree. And then the last one is the extended zone, which goes from 30 feet to 100 feet. This is where, again, if you can limit up, space it out a little bit, but it's going to bring a crown fire, which is up in the tops of the trees, down to your ground level and then out. Again, sometimes this can be hard, especially if you don't have that much distance between your house, and that's where we really encourage you to work with your neighbors. We recently secured a grant through the Idaho Department of Land, so over in the Johnny Creek area, where we have funds that we can help homeowners to create that defensible space because we know that that has a potential to save your property. It's not guaranteed, but it has a strong potential. So really trying to do what we can to help residents to make their homes hardened and more defensible in the event of a wildfire. And there, in the bags that I have, you'll see a brochure. It shows how to prepare your home for a wildfire. Again, it kind of goes over the same types of stuff that I've talked about, and there's tons of websites on there. We're always happy, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that, about home assessments. We're always happy to come out, if you live in the city of Pocatello, if you give me a call, my number's up there. I will come out, walk your property with you, give you some tips and ideas of what you can do. Nothing's mandatory, we don't report it to your insurance company, but it's just some ideas of what you could do to help making your home more defensible in the event of a wildfire. And then also maybe some outreach to get your neighbors on board. Because what we know is if we come in and tell you you have to do it, we're going to meet more resistance than if you go to your neighbor and say, hey, I'm concerned about this, would you be willing to take some proactive steps? So that is a free service we offer. If you're ever interested, just reach out to us. So that's getting ready. We want to do that well before the wildfire actually comes. And then as the fire is approaching, we're going to get set. This is where we want to start monitoring, and I would tell you to monitor reliable and reputable sites. We obviously know that people on Facebook or social media or Twitter, any of those can be their own self-reporter and oftentimes can put out there maybe some false information. So I would just really encourage you, if we have a large scale emergency, as I mentioned, we'll be using Alert Sense. And there'll be a link in there that'll direct you to a city of Pocatello website that we've created, and that will have the most up to date information as to if there's evacuations, what's going on, and we'll keep that updated as much as possible with the information as it becomes available. News outlets, we'll be trying to get that out and trying to be as transparent as we can. Really want to make sure that people are aware of the situation and as it's changing, because we know with a wildfire, it can change very quickly. So really making sure you're paying attention to that, and maybe start moving those important items to your car and being prepared, especially if you know that it's potentially going to get close to your home. The other thing that we would encourage is if you have any conditions that would require you to take longer to get out, or you don't feel safe, go ahead and evacuate. There's nothing saying that you can't leave early. Just but being mindful of it, because once that order comes, we were going to want you to move pretty quick. It's not the time when we say, hey, it's time to go, that now you're going, okay, well, let's start gathering all of our stuff. So that's the get set. As I mentioned, we do use the Alert Sense or the Wireless Emergency Alert. I'm sure you've all received it. Oftentimes, you'll see it when you get an Amber Alert on your phone where it'll pop up. We do have that here in Bannock County, and it can only be used for when there's critical situations. So when there's a potential for a loss of life, Amber Alerts, if there's a public safety emergency, that is the time when we can go in there and we can issue a warning that will pop up on your phone. People can go in and turn those off, but generally people don't. We encourage you not to because that'll be key information that'll be coming out in the event of an emergency and can provide you with it. And how it works is it goes off the tower. So we'll draw, like if it was in the city of Pocatello, or the state was here at City Hall, we would draw it around City Hall. And so anybody who's in this area or anybody who comes within the area for the timeframe would get notified of it. And it goes down to one tenth of a mile. So it's pretty good. But again, it wouldn't cover people that were outside that area. So if you had a home, let's say at home here, but you weren't home, you wouldn't be notified unless you drove into the area. That's where we would more use that signup one that you would sign up for. And then after we got this one out, we could send that one out to let you know, hey, we're having it, because you can specify your location on that one. But this is the one that's key. You do not have to sign up for this. It's just a matter of when we get notified from our incident command that there's the need for evacuations, we will go ahead and issue this out. This is kind of what they look like. This is what the emergency alert system would come up as. Depending on the type of phone you have, you'd either have 90 characters or up to 300 characters. But with ours, the way we have it set up is, is it would direct you to a website so that you would have additional information as to what exact areas, where we're recommending people to go, and providing any information that we have. So and then if the fire is getting close enough to your home, there would point, we, the incident commander said, go ahead and evacuate. That's where we want you to go now. We want you to leave immediately. Don't wait, because we know fire won't wait. Depending on the amount of fuels in the area, a fire can grow very quickly. I know in the Paradise Fire, it was burning a football field a second. So it was moving very fast. When you're evacuated, we're going to try to give you as much direction. We should have law enforcement with us directing us to tell you which way to go, especially if one of the paths is blocked. They're going to give you directions on which the best egress path to get out. And then we don't want you to return until it's safe to do so. Oftentimes, as we know with the Charlotte Fire, they wanted to go in and make sure that structures were safe and that there wasn't any hazard for anybody. So that'll be things that officials will be doing once the fire is contained, and then that way it'll be safe for you to re-inhabit. And then just making sure you check in with your family. Obviously, that's our first and foremost is life safety. So we want to make sure everybody's okay. If you have kids that are at home and that don't have cell phones, come up with a plan for them to notify a neighbor, or some way that they can get notified if they need to If you were ever in your car and you become trapped, we obviously hope this never is the case, but we always want to be prepared if it was. If you're in that situation, we want you to remain as calm as you can. Call 911 and give them the location to the best of your ability. If you're in a vehicle, ideally, you're going to park in an area of clear vegetation, so it's hopefully going to provide some refuge to you. Want you to close all your windows and vents, turn on your headlights or your flashers, because in a wildfire, it gets very dark. So making it easier for you to find. This came from California, and I figured they know what they were doing. But I loved how it said, cover up with a wool blanket. I don't know very many people, maybe more people have wool blankets than I just, I don't have a wool blanket. But if you do, that's great. I'd say a blanket would probably work. And then lie on the vehicle's floor, just trying to get low, as we know smoke goes up and smoke is what, we don't want to keep from breathing in our lungs. If you're on foot, get to a ditch or a low lying area, lay on the ground, ideally with your face down to protect it and provide some shelter. If you're at your home, gather your family. I thought this one was interesting, fill sinks and tubs with cold water, but I'm guessing they're thinking the water's going to go out. Keep doors and windows closed, but unlocked. That way first responders can get in there and get you, and then stay away from windows. Because we know if a fire is approaching, depending on the fuel loads, it can get very hot and can cause radiant heat to come in. So being more interior will offer you that protection. And I talked really fast, so if you have questions afterwards, you'll be able to answer it, but I wanted to save time for Nick, because he had some. So Nick.
Yes, I don't talk quite as fast as Kim. My name's Nick Christensen. I'm Assistant Chief with the Fire Department. And I just wanted to talk for a few minutes about the Fire Department specifically and our response capabilities, just to familiarize you. We have five fire stations in Pocatello. One of them's out to the airport, so it doesn't really count necessarily. It's a little different than the others, quite different than the others. So we have four in-town fire stations. We have an engine and a brush truck at each of those stations. So they're staffed with the same crew, so they're always together. And depending on the situation, we will either staff the engine or the brush truck, or perhaps if the situation's right, we might split and staff both. They are staffed with a minimum of three guys, often we have four on each crew. And so there's four brush trucks in town. We, the city recently purchased three new brush trucks, and that was a big leap ahead for us. They're very nice and very capable, and we're currently looking at purchasing a fourth. So each of the frontline brush trucks will be newer. So a typical response for a brush fire for us, it comes in, they will dispatch a battalion chief and three engines. And then they'll respond, once they arrive, they're going to size up the fire, kind of get a picture of what's going on, and then determine their priorities and form a plan as far as what additional resources they may need, or if they could do it with the three engines they've got. In fighting a wildfire, a frequent problem that we find is that it moves fast, and so there's a lot threatened, and so a lot of resources are needed, and I'll kind of get back to that. But as homes are threatened, we're faced with the responsibility to go into the area that's threatened and kind of triage the structures. And so we have to make a decision, this house is savable, this house is not. And a lot of that decision is made by what the homeowners do ahead of time, what kind of prevent or defensible space has been provided. If we have a half hour, if we're predicting a half hour before the fire gets there, then we look at this and, well, this house is going to take an hour's worth of prep. Okay, this one's going to take 15, and this one's going to take 15, so maybe we can get both these, we're going to leave that one. And so it's not an easy decision, but it's kind of made for us ahead of time by the preparation that homeowners make. That defensible space is huge as far as protecting your home. I think a lot of people have the idea that we're going to come in and do all we can to save your home, but, and we're certainly going to do what we can, but if it's beyond our abilities or it's going to risk the lives of our firefighters, we're not going to do One other thing I mentioned as far as needing more resources, a frequent problem we have is we just don't have enough. We have the four brush trucks and engines in Pocatello. That's nowhere near enough for a fast growing wildfire. And so we have mutual aid agreements with many fire departments. There's an agreement that kind of, that includes almost all the fire departments on the eastern side of the state, from Island Park down to Bear Lake. And all these fire departments have signed in to help one another for the first 24 hours without cost. And so we can call on those resources, and in that area, that's a lot of resources if there's something going on. And a good example, that was the Charlotte Fire. We had resources from all over, and we got them here quickly, almost so quickly we couldn't assign them. And so that's a big tool that we have that is very useful to us and certainly necessary in the case of a wildfire. And as that goes, I mean, that's a big area. Of course, we're going to request mutual aid from our closest neighbors first, Chubik, Pocatello Valley, North Bannock Fire, because they can get there and give us the help most quickly. And we have the relationship already with them. We recognize faces and it's more easily, easy to work with people that we've already worked with before. So that goes better. And really, as far as response on a fire, that's kind of it in a nutshell for wildfire. But one other thing I wanted to talk about, and Kim mentioned it earlier, is one thing we do is we deploy wildland resources out to other agencies. So we're not the only one that needs more resources in the event of a fire. Everywhere does. This time of year, all the West is wanting more resources, sometimes for specific fires and sometimes just to have them there for initial attack, new fires that might pop up. And so that's something we do. We will, the Idaho Department of Land helps us fill resource orders elsewhere, and we send units out. Right now, we have two units assigned out with crews, one in Ely, Nevada. They're coming home tomorrow. They've been gone for two weeks. And one over in Twin Falls and perhaps Oregon, we're not absolutely sure where they ended up. And they left this morning. And so that's something that we do, and that really benefits us. We have to be careful, of course. We don't want to send out all our guys and not have anybody here to protect the home. But we gauge that when the resource order comes in and decide what's the best thing to do. The benefits we get out of it is that we're actually, we're able to help other people, of course, but also we get the experience. Our guys get the experience and knowledge of being on those fires, and that really strengthens our department and our abilities here in Pocatello. And another thing is we make money doing it. It provides revenue to the city. They'll pay for those, not only the firefighters and the wages, that's just kind of a wash, but also the equipment. And we're able to bring in revenue that helps the Fire Department budget in the city and helps buy some of this equipment that's all very expensive. And so really, that's what I have as far as wildfire. We're grateful for the opportunity to speak a little tonight.
So I might just add a couple of things, and I do have a couple of questions, and I want to clarify a few things. Assistant Chief Christensen just said, when we send deployments out, it pays for their wages and stuff like that. Those wages do not come out of the city of Pocatello coffers. Those wages are being paid by the people that are running the fire that they're responding to, and so I wanted to make sure that we clarified that we weren't just paying them and then not reimbursing the city for that, and the taxpayers' money was being spent somewhere else. That's not what we do when a deployment happens. We are, the city actually has the ability to recoup all of the expenses on behalf of the firefighters, plus the city, the Fire Department gets some revenues from the equipment that is, that is used in that, those processes. And so it really, truly does help us. But it's also extremely important to know, we don't send them all out, because we, if you looked, if Kim backed up to all the red on those maps, we recognize we are in a hotspot right here. We've been pretty lucky in the last few years that we haven't had too many serious fires, but it's just a matter of time. I get asked often, what keeps me awake at night? And this is it, when it comes to wildfires and wildland fires and urban interface fires that we have. We have had a number of very close calls on the, in the Satterfield area a couple of years ago. We were within, well, quite frankly, had the wind not changed, you're going to hear that a time or two, had the wind not changed, we probably would have lost a number of houses along Satterfield, right along that area. And so that's worrisome to me. The Charlotte Fire happened, we lost 66 homes. That's a lot of, a lot of property that's lost, and that was lost in a matter of minutes, quite frankly. Johnny Creek scares me to death. I'll tell you right now, it scared me, and Nick, I'm going to put you on the spot. How long on a day like tomorrow, because today's almost over, but tomorrow, would it take to burn through Johnny Creek if we had a fire?
Six to seven minutes is what BLM has told us. If it's a red flag warning day, so conditions are at arguably their worst, and the winds, the prevailing winds are going the right way, it could be burned through Johnny Creek in six to seven minutes. And you think there's over 1,000 homes in that area.
So it's nerve-wracking, six to seven. I heard eight, I thought it was eight minutes, and now you've ruined that for me.
More wind tomorrow.
There's more wind tomorrow. And so, and so it's a major concern that we have, and we want to make sure people are taken care of. Kim mentioned a number of grants and grant opportunities that we have, and it's interesting to me, this is what was very interesting to me, the Charlotte Fire happened, every person I talked to in Johnny Creek was going to go make defensible space within the next two weeks. Well, you go up there right now, and there is not a lot of defensible space there, and junipers don't grow that quickly. And so it's just something that we just have to really pay attention to and watch. We get criticized a lot. I used to love fireworks. I'll tell you, I used to love them. Fourth of July used to be a fun time to go watch those. They scare me to death now. We did have a firework, start a fire a few years ago, I guess, I say a few years ago, it was in...
The bitter-rut one, Nick was actually the incident commander on that.
He was. When was that, 14, 2014, 2015?
Somewhere near.
I'm going to guess, we lost two homes from fireworks that shouldn't have been being lit off. And so it's nerve-wracking sometimes to see what we, what we have to worry about and deal with. And so with that, Council Rick?
Can I make a comment? Every week, I get a report from the Idaho Department of Lands, and it ties in with what you guys are talking about. So far this year, I got one yesterday, so far this year, there have been 130 wildfires on IDL property. In the last week, there have been 14, and we've been lucky that it's only contained so far about 5,000 acres. But it's a problem across this entire state. So it's good to hear of the cooperative effort there is across the entire state, because you get a big fire like what we're talking about, go to Johnny Creek, we don't have the resources to manage that fast enough to save it, but we can call on other people to help us.
Well, what's interesting about that, we don't have the resources. Our airport is 10 minutes away if we drive. We have the BLM that will help fight those fires from the air, and we typically have a number of aircraft there when they're not needed somewhere else. And so, but I don't know if I can get a plane here in six minutes, you know, either. And so I had Josh and then Linda, and then Hey.
For the representatives from our Fire Department, we know that in areas that are designated flood planes, homeowners insurance will oftentimes exclude coverage of flood damage. What should homeowners look for in their insurance policies to make sure that their property is covered in the case of a wildfire?
So it's really interesting, across the nation, you're starting to see insurance companies do assessments of properties. It hasn't hit Idaho yet, but in talking with the insurance companies, when I've gone to these national conferences, it will be something in the near future. So what I would tell everybody, because after, a lot of these after-action reviews, is their homes are not insured for the appropriate amount, especially as we've seen the increase in costs in home, they find that they were not insured to cover the actual cost to rebuild. And so just making sure that your plan covers the true value of your home, and then the incidentals inside of it is huge. And then going forth, if you do live in a wildland urban interface, I would see here in the near future, just because we know insurance companies are paying out big bucks to rebuild these homes, is they're going to start to require homeowners to take, and even in California, you're seeing them, if homeowners don't take the steps to mitigate and create defensible space, they're refusing to insure them.
So it may be beneficial then for homeowners to do those inspections that you've offered as a documentation in the case of a fire in order to get fair compensation for their homes in rebuilding?
And like I said, we have grants available, like, and as the mayor was talking about with Satterfield, we just got done doing a large project up there, creating that defensible space on the city's property to make sure that it's defensible, to not create added things. But the one for Johnny Creek, and we are, you know, there's always opportunities we can put in for more. Obviously, with Johnny Creek being such a huge concern for us, that was our first area that we really want to. And it's actually a great grant, because it's 10%, which most grants, if you look at BLM or Forest Service, theirs is usually a 50/50, if you're lucky, cost match. Ours is a 90/10. And what we'd actually really encourage is, we'd rather like you see, do it in kind than in cash. So that could be a matter of, you're out there helping the contractors to move lumber, maybe you're doing, you don't have the ability to physically do that, but you reach out to a neighbor and get them on board, you get to count your hours, and that covers your match. So we're really trying to make it affordable for everybody, and so that there's no barriers for preventing people to do defensible space on their property. So if you have questions about that, again, reach out my number, I'll go back and put it on there, I can connect you. High Country RCND is actually managing that one for us with our help, and so we can get you connected with them.
Okay, thank you. And I owe the council an apology. I apologize, I called them by their first name. It's Councilmember Mansfield, thank you. Councilmember Cheatham, thank you. Council President Lurick, and then we'll have Councilmember Paulson, and then Councilmember Nichols.
I just wanted to ask about something Mayor Blad just touched on, the airplanes and the BLM. I remember, I think it was about four or five years ago, the big fire that was on the east up around Chinese Peak, and then it went all the way to Barton Road, it started coming fairly close to where I am. And that spread really fast, and I was out walking while that was, when it started and while it was being fought, and just the number, I lost count at about 58, I think, was flights over my head, and every size of plane, every type of plane. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about those resources and who they belong to, and when those get used, and...
So I can, all the aircraft will either come from BLM or Forest Service, they manage them all, even though they may have private contracts with those aircrafts. It is all managed through them, and one thing we want to make sure is that it stays in one area, so we don't ever have potential for midair collisions, and so it is housed by one agency. You'll see the DC-10 come in, that's the big plane that drops the fire retardant. It's interesting, when I first came over to Fire, to learn for each drop that they do, and it could change now, this was like last year or the year before, $60,000 per drop for each time that they drop that DC-10. And then you have the little seats, the single-engine aircraft, air tanker. They're the little planes, and they can bring those in, but it really just depends on availability and where they're at. It is interesting to note, sometimes you'll see them coming in, but they may come here and refuel and head back to California because of our, we have such a great airport for the landing, and it's wide enough to bring in those commercial and to bring in the DC-10s that they can land, refuel, and get back to California quicker than they can land in a California airstrip. That was interesting. So, but you'll see the different aircrafts, and what we do is, we just call BLM, and Nick mentioned with mutual aid, the minute we call them, they're great, they'll start sending whatever they have, and they make the determination with air support as to availability, and they also look at the weather conditions and some of the things with that.
So they decide when a fire would warrant that or not?
Yeah, often, often we'll go into a unified command mode with them involved and make the decision with them, we can request it. But yes, they coordinate the aircraft.
One thing I would say is, they started seeing more, as we started seeing more and more drones, people are always wanting to be their self-reporters. If you put a drone in the air, they will not put aircraft in the air. And so that's really important, if you have a wildfire, we don't want to see drones, because if they fly, then the aircraft can't. And so that hampers our ability to get that as additional resources. So we're really trying to make sure that there are no drones in the area.
That's good to know, I didn't know that. Councilmember Paulson.
I may have misheard you, but did you say there was one emergency alert service that you have to, like, subscribe to?
So it's, it's AlertSense is the system, there's an in-AlertSense, there's two different ones. There's the automated one that we can just send out to anybody that goes within 1/10 of a mile of the area that we draw. And that's the one, like, you'll get an amber alert, or if we had an evacuation order, how we put it out. They have another section of that that's called the subscription, and if you sign up for that one, at first, we were like, you know, do we use that, do we not? But the value we see in that is, with the IPaaS or the National Alerting System, whether you get the news across the television and on your cellphones, that is designed for a specific area for the WIA, it's the Wireless Emergency Alert. So that's great if you're in the area, but we see value in the subscription in that if you're at work and your kids are at home. So our goal would be first to get the WIA out, so that we can get those people in the media area notified, but then follow it up with a subscription one, so that if you've got kiddos at home that maybe don't have cellphones, that you have some way to get notification to them. And so, or if you're on vacation, you could get notified. So that one, you subscribe for, but the WIA one, you do not have to do anything for. We go in and put it in there, and if you're within 1/10 of the area we draw, you're going to get.
Is the one, the subscription, the QR code that you had up here, that you have in the bag?
Yep. It'll look like that. Because you can text it, you can scan it, you can go to the line, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Who was next? Councilmember Nichols.
So do you have suggestions for, like, roofing and building materials? If someone was going to re-roof their house, and they have the cedar shake roof, and they wanted to do something less combustible?
Yeah, we can give them brochures and different options that are more hardy. Obviously, we know it's never going to say it's totally fireproof, but it's going to give it a better fighting chance. And so, yeah, we have brochures, when I come out, I'll give it to them. You can visit firewise.org, has a total list of all the different materials you can use and that are more fire-resistant.
Right. So if somebody wanted to say was going to re-roof and re-site it, could you come out and help them?
Absolutely, yeah.
Actually, there's, with the wildland urban interface code, there's actually requirements for that in the...
For new ones, right?
...wildland urban interface areas.
So would that apply to Pocatello for new construction?
So where would somebody, if they're, say I go buy a house next to a wildland interface, where would I go to find out what material I could use? I understand a contractor probably would know, but what about me?
You took away my answer.
Sorry.
Call the contractor. Kim has great knowledge, and she can call, come out and do the...
A little brochure.
...property evaluation. And also, they can call anybody at the Fire Department, they'll get us to somebody.
Does your co-inspector not do a prior inspection on a new home?
New home, yes.
Absolutely, a new home, but if it's, if it's an old home but new to me...
Right.
That would be my question, is, you know, back in the day in 1956...
...the fire sector will tell them what they can or cannot use.
Yeah, yeah.
Typically.
Follow-up on a different topic. So can wildfires be started by vehicles, such as driving over dry grass?
Yep, the catalytic converters could get hot, and so if you're, that's why we really encourage you to stay on paths, and if it's really hot out, avoid doing that, or dragging chains, or if you have a flat tire. The one that just started out in the South Pocatello a couple of weeks ago, that was from a gentleman driving a trailer, had no idea, he had a flat, was driving on the rim, and it was throwing sparks. So everywhere he went, he would throw a spark and start a wildfire. And so just making sure you maintain your vehicles, don't park in tall grass, don't flip cigarette butts outside. Do it, I mean, do your best you can. They know that about 80% of all wildfires are human caused, so definitely, we can do our part and do a little more to hopefully prevent them.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
I just wanted to follow up on that. I remember, this was years and years ago, this woman was driving across the country in an RV and had a chain dragging and set off a wildfire, and it was over 300,000 acres, and they found her and charged her. So my question is, in this area, if someone's driving and they, or mowing, or whatever they do, and they set off a spark and they start a fire, what's their liability?
Nick, you want to talk to me, too?
That might be a good question for Jared.
But I do know BLM will go after them, like, if they had the ones that were the exploding targets a couple of years ago by Chinese. And if BLM, they will seek restitution from you, and...
Yeah. Do we in the city?
My understanding, my understanding is, you can be held liable for it, absolutely. From the city's standpoint up through the federal government, you can be held liable for it, and so just be careful.
I know the gentleman that burned the two homes down, he had to pay for those, yeah, from fireworks.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we do have a few people that would like to ask a few questions or have some comments. Gary, Michael, and then Kevin.
I'm Gary.
If you would just come right on up here, that would be awesome.
Infringing on my time, can Mr. Christensen explain what a brush truck is?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, I should have done that better. A brush truck is built on a smaller chassis, so it's usually a heavy pickup, so a 550 or 450, or 5500 or something along those lines, with the back, the bed part replaced by a utility bed with a water tank, usually four or 500 gallons, or we like to go that big, sometimes they're as small as 200, and a pump on back that runs independent of the motor in the truck.
Awesome, because I had an idea what it might be, but I know when we have a profession, we sometimes use the jargon.
But Gary, if I might just add, the City of Pocatello, we used to have until last year, right? We got three new ones last year. Last year, we had three new ones. Our brush trucks were, I think our newest one was 19, was it a 2000? A 2002, and our oldest was an 84, 86, 80, something like that. And so they're equipment that we have not historically really truly kept up on, because we don't use them until the summertime. And so we had a couple of, a grant opportunity, and we had ICCU donated and paid for one full brush truck for us, and then we were able to, the city council approved the purchase of another. So we ended up with three last year. We have one other one that is a 2000...
The next one's 2002.
2002 that we have right now. It's older that you'll see running around. The city council just approved purchasing a fourth brush truck to replace that one that we have now. And so hopefully, you'll see in the next couple of years, all of our trucks being new and up to date, and it's a good thing. So, sorry, Gary.
That's okay. Can I approach with some pictures?
Absolutely, please.
I did four sets, I didn't know how many I was going to need, so if you guys could I'm here because I'm actually have exhausted every resource that I could imagine over two and a half years, I'm not going to bore you with all the details. Those brush piles and piles of tumbleweed are less than 50 yards from our houses, some of the houses, probably less than 30 yards, maybe even 20 yards from the fences of some of the properties. I don't know what else to do. My last stop this week was with the director here of Parks, and he said that, to give him seven to 10 days, which I did, but I was not aware of this meeting tonight, so I thought I would bring this and call this to everybody's attention to see what we need to do, because I was originally told, we don't own the property, and I said, yes, you do, check your email, because I went down to the assessor's office, got a printout, and I can't remember, it's either the HOA or Five Star Property Management owns the property, because I left all of that paperwork with the Parks Director, who is going to get back with me to see what, if anything, could be done. But like I said, this has been going on for so long. This is a major fire hazard. The HOA, the gentleman that I was working with for over 18 months, sent somebody, had actually sent somebody out, and then the guy came over to my house, I was working in my front yard, and he said, they just told me there were some branches, he says, dude, he goes, there's at least two or three semi-loads. I said, yeah? No kidding? That's what I'm talking about. I don't know what to do, I don't know what to do anymore to get this cleaned up. I know our HOA is sitting on $46,000 in excess funds. It seems to me, if they own the property, they could use some of that money to get that cleaned up. My last email from them was, we're not going to be able to do anything because it's not developed property, and if you're that concerned, maybe you should get some of your neighbors together and have everybody go clean it up.
Gary, quick question for you, where is this?
I live on La Valle Strada, which is the opposite way of Hospital Way. If you turn right to Hospital Way, you turn left, it's La Valle Strada, go all the way up to the top of the hill. Bill Isley is my neighbor, I don't know if you know where Bill lives, between his house and the house... Between his house and the house next to him, which belongs to Joe, I won't give his last name. There's a pathway there between the houses. You go up probably forty, fifty yards at the most, and you'll see the first pile of brush. And you go up about another fifteen or twenty yards, and then you'll see mountains of, of tumbleweed. I mean, mountains of it. And there's kids up there. Obviously, it's summertime. I've had this problem the last two years. That's why this has been going on so long. They're smoking cigarettes, smoking dope, shooting off fireworks, and it's gonna be bad if that light's on fire, any of that.
Thank you.
Anyway.
So we've got a number of grants. It's kind of in a weird place. If it belongs to the HOA, we really can't do anything, go in and force it. If it's private property, we can't really go in and force that cleanup. However, we, if we have a grant that can help us, maybe we can use that.
So it's, right, the one I have right now is for Johnny Creek. I don't know if Hannah still has anything in hers.
So we'll have to check. What we'll do is check and see, because the, the issue is, is Hannah's was East Bench Highland area. Yours is Johnny Creek area. He's talking Center Street. And so we might, might have to take a look. Let's take a look at it and see where we are and what we can, what we can do. Because there's probably, well, if we're lucky, there will be some money that we can work with the HOA or whomever's property that is to meet that ten percent that Kim was talking about. So we'll see what we can, we'll, we'll...
Do you need my phone number of contact? I don't have it on any of that.
You're welcome to write it down on the back of this one, and we'll move on to Michael. Sure. This one won't do any good for you. Only write on that. Okay, that sounds great.
And I thank you.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. Okay, Michael.
Hi, I'm Michael, Michael Osman. I live on Holman Avenue, which is a Rancho area. I'll be up above Alameda. And some of you, especially firemen, may recall, we had an evacuation order on the Fourth of July there. I was in Chubbick and saw it on my security cam, the police knocking on my door, and came home to find out what was going on, and everything was on fire. And so on the hill, you know, we have our, have our yards, and most people own down to the bottom of the hill. The grass gets easily two and a half feet tall. And by the Fourth of July, it's like, you know, just yellow and dry. And people, because they don't maintain that, maintain that part, often dump their branches and sticks, and sometimes pallets and things down there, and it's out of sight, out of mind. And when the fire hit, it got really big, and the firemen could not put it out because of how big it was. And this is not the first time. This happens all the time. And it's always the Fourth of July that starts it. But it could be anything that could start a fire. It's a fire hazard. And my wife and I, we keep ours in care of, and it's green and short, but the rest of the hill is not. And I don't know what we can do about it. I mean, obviously, eliminating illegal fireworks would help tremendously. But, but beyond that, if it could be mowed down somehow or some kind of an order requiring people to take care of it before the Fourth of July hits, that would reduce the risk dramatically. And also, if you, if it was mowed down, you'd see some of the debris, and people would be more inclined to take care of some of those things and, and, and get rid of the branches and pallets and debris that shouldn't be there. So.
Yeah, I remember that, getting alert, watching the fireworks, and that we had a fire over there and evacuation and, and stuff. And I'm not, I don't know, Nick might know where it started. It looked like it started at the bottom and just ran up the, the top. I, I don't even know who or what caused it, but it's just dry, very, very dry. And, and it's tough. So luckily, that was a testament to our Fire Department, quite frankly. They were able to get it out. And that's a pretty steep hill. Next time you drive down Highline Road, look to the right after that building there. It's, it's pretty steep and tough to, tough to defend, so.
And I can say the lack of wind helped in that, too.
Yes, it did. Yes, it did. If it was a couple of years ago, it would have been a, been a bigger problem.
I've seen three or four fires there.
Yeah.
Always on the Fourth of July.
Yep.
Do you have a good relationship with your neighbors at all to be able to?
Well, yes, I do, and I know most of them, but there's also a lot of rentals there. And they won't do anything about it, and I don't know who landlords are.
I say we're happy to get information or handouts that, 'cause as we've seen, just like with Johnny Creek, it's better when it comes from neighbor to neighbor than from Fire Department coming in and telling people what they have to do.
Right.
But we're always willing to offer resources. And then I know in like May, NFPA does what they call Firewise, and there's like five hundred dollar grants you can get. And maybe that would be enough to help somebody to take the steps, to even pay the landfill cost or something, to take it to the landfill. But we're always happy to get you the information for like the door-to-door, stick on it. And then maybe in May of next year, reach out to us, and I can get you connected with that.
Perfect. Is your number in the, in the pamphlet? I saw it up on the slide.
It might be.
It was on the slide.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We also have the program through sanitation. If you sign up in early January to get on a list for a free roll-off container, you could perhaps get one arranged for your neighborhood, and then in that, in part bringing brochures, you know, let neighbors know that they can take free sticks, other debris they would otherwise might throw down there into that, and then get that dumped for free as a neighborhood project.
Probably a good idea.
I'll just give you my card. That'll save you right now. There you go.
All right, and then our next one is Kevin.
So how much water do you take, do you, do you come with on a fire?
Our brush trucks carry five hundred gallons, and our engines carry seven hundred and fifty.
So if my house was on fire, how long would you, would that fire, would that water last?
That depends on how on fire it was. The hope is that we can get there as quickly as possible and put it out with tank water, which majority of the time, we're able to do a tank water. Not always.
'Cause I'm a half a mile from a fire hydrant. And you don't carry any more than what you just spoke. So.
Well, well, let me, let me help with that answer, though. The, the engines carry that much.
Correct.
But when we have a fire like that, you're going to have a number of water tankers that we're bringing up there.
On a wildland fire, yes, sir. But if it's just my house, no.
In, in, where you're talking about, then they would be sending tankers.
Why?
Yes, because of the, because you're so far away from the hydrant. Until we get hydrants put in there, that's exactly what would happen.
And we're going through training at this point, because we're not as familiar with that. But with the new conditions out there, we've been going through training with the Water Department.
Right, and I was on the volunteer Fire Department out there for twenty years. I was on the Charlotte Fire, you know, so I do know something about this. And it's, it's odd to me. Nearly fifty years ago, Johnny Creek area was annexed into the city. On a recent drive through the area, I noticed a lack of fire hydrants, some of them even out of order. Certainly not enough fire for, to meet city code. Going further into the Country Club area, there's a few more hydrants, still not enough to meet city code. My question for the mayor and council, is this what we are expected to tolerate on the South Fifth annexation for the next fifty years, waiting for maybe a fire hydrant to show up? Very inappropriate. We don't even have services. We're gonna be paying a large amount of taxes. How long do we have to wait? People of Johnny Creek and Country Club, maybe they're willing to wait. I'm not. I'm gonna be a pain in the neck over here. You know, I, I don't know what you think you're gonna be doing. I mean, you got a feather in your cap for annexing some acreage, but you're getting raspberries for your services. You're just, you're not providing the services. You're just, you're, you're growing, but what are you doing? You're not helping Johnny Creek any. They still got septic tanks up there. You know, you mentioned that you, you know, you're gonna protect the aquifer 'cause you're gonna stop us from using our septic tanks. Fifty years ago, they, you know, they're, they're still using them. Come on. You people are, you're just, you're sad. You know, I feel, I'm scared. My house is defensible. I've been defending, I've been working on it for many years. I went up and watched the last fire that was just over there, in the, you know, up at the end of Castle Medias just a few weeks ago. You know, I wasn't on the fire. I retired from the Fire Department. You know, you had a fire truck out there, but what the hell is it gonna do? It wasn't gonna do anything. With seven hundred and fifty gallons of water, it's gonna be out in minutes. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a couple of comments here?
Absolutely.
First question, how much money did we just get from the federal government for the Johnny Creek sewage main line?
Sixteen point five million for the South Fifth area?
Would we have been in a, in a, a candidate who could have applied for that money if Johnny Creek was not inside city boundaries?
Oh, you're talking Johnny Creek.
Johnny Creek.
Johnny Creek, the federal government, we got one point three million, one point seven million.
To run a main line up?
To run a main line up.
Would we have been able to apply?
South Fifth.
Would, would we have been able to apply for it if we were outside of the city limits? No, absolutely not.
I, I think that that highlights right there the opportunity that becomes present. Also, I'd like to then follow up on the fire point. Did you say that the common response is three engines?
Yes.
Each engine carries seven hundred and fifty gallons of, or seventy-five hun, how many?
Seven hundred and fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty. So the initial response carries approximately, what, twenty-two fifty, if my math does right? Which then allows for time for other tanker trucks to then come and respond if more water is required.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, that's all the people that I had signed up. Counsel, you have any other questions, any, anything else that you would? We are a couple of minutes, literally just a couple of minutes. Is there anybody that didn't sign up that would like to say anything?
I have a question about the insurance. When you said it was just
Okay, wait. Ma'am, come on up here.
I'm, I'm just curious.
If you would come on up here. We wanna see you on, yeah, we wanna see you on TV at home.
Oh, good.
Get ready to sign autographs.
I'm wondering who owns that property, just of Olympus up Chubbick by the Portniff, with all the sagebrush there. They do mow that grass around there, but I think if you got a fire in that sagebrush and the wind was blowing, you'd get my house. So I don't know who owns it. It's been driving me crazy.
So I'm, I'm not certain what property you're talking about, but you've got a major
Okay, you're driving?
Mr. Mayor?
You know where Chubbick Road is? You know where Portniff is?
Just one minute, what?
Okay.
Identity.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, ma'am. Not only do you get to be on TV, but you have to tell everybody who you are.
I'm Angie Hernandez.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, so tell me again, Chubbick Road?
Across from Portniff, there's Chubbick Road, just across from the Portniff, from Chubbick Road to Jerome.
Okay, and you're talking east of the housing development that they have right there?
East, east.
So that would be, I believe, the developer of that housing, that, that housing unit, not the apartments, but the houses?
Well, somebody told me it was, belonged to the school district.
Okay, if you're talking about across the street from, to the east of, off, across of Olympus.
Yes.
That is the school district right now.
Was.
Was.
They just traded that to a private developer for that piece done by Highland.
So breaking news, they just traded that. So, there you go. I don't know who owns that, but it used to be the hu, the school district. And then north of Chubbick Road right there is the developer.
Yeah, okay.
That has that.
Yeah, that, that's too far away from my house. I'll let them worry about it.
Yeah. Absolutely. Okay, yes, ma'am, insurance. You had an insurance question?
I did. He's gonna ask.
Kevin Spencer, four oh seven on North Lower Road. You were talking about insurance earlier. And yes, it is a problem right now. We tried to change insurances to bundle our house and home. And the insurance company said, no, you live in a wildlife or wildfire zone. We will not insure you. So, I mean, it's already happening here.
Oh, that's interesting.
You know, so, you know, if my insurance company finds out I'm a half a mile from a hydrant, they may even cancel me. I don't know.
Okay, well, that's, okay, interesting. All right, I'm gonna, gonna give anyone else an opportunity. Don't usually do this. Usually, I cut it off pretty easy, 'cause it never worked that good for us, but when I, when I extend it, but okay, then, then we will go ahead and wrap the meeting up. I, I just in doing so, thank you very much for coming. Thank you for sharing some concerns. It's good for us to hear some of those concerns. And, well, don't, don't, don't throw your arms, please don't throw your arms in the air at me. And stuff like that. Thank you for sharing those concerns, and, and we'll be looking into things. We'll be looking into the stuff for you as well. And so we appreciate you coming and, and your time that you've spent here tonight and stuff. The council, thank you very much for you taking time out of your day to, to be here tonight. This really, truly is a concern that we have. And it's, it's a worry that I have, because we have so many places in our community that could create a problem. And so we're, we're doing what we can. We've received, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars of grants to help thin areas out and make places more defensible. And we have a lot of fights trying to get that done, quite frankly. And so when, when we have the opportunities, we would ask you to please consider it and see what we can do to help with, with those things, and, and we'll, we'll go from there. But with that, counsel, if, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand to say anything. Thank you very much for being here tonight, and with that, we are adjourned.